I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the best work of liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Dear Father, Lord, we love you and we lift your name up and declare you our Lord and our Savior and we thank you for all the blessings that you get to us. Thank you even if we're undeserved for your mercy and your grace, Lord. We ask you tonight to be with the decision makers of the county, lift them up, fill them with wisdom and guide them in decisions to better serve the citizens of this county and create a life and opportunity for all citizens of Cleveland County. Lord, we pray most of all that everything that is said and done here tonight is glorifying and honoring the you and your holy and precious name. We pray. Amen.
Next, we'll recognize any elected officials. Next, we'll recognize any veterans.
Dean Vanney, U.S. Army.
John Cherry, United States Marine Corps.
Marcus Simpson, United States Navy and United States Army.
Greg Moore, U.S. Army.
Robert Farah, United States Navy.
Lloyd James, U.S. Army.
Right behind him.
Bill Ryan, U.S. Air Force.
Jonas Hanson, United States Air Force.
Nicole Hanson, United States Air Force.
Brian White, U.S. Air Army.
Jason Paulson, U.S. Secretary of Defense.
Johnny Hudson, U.S. Army. Look, we've got our county pen we designed and it's got four veterans. We give each veteran that has not got one is tendered to me. If he's one that doesn't have one, would you please come forward? Let me get a handful up here.
We appreciate each of you, sir. Okay? Appreciate you, brother.
Anybody coming in late who's a veteran?
Thank you, Mr. Hutchinson. Hudson's the next up. Item on the agenda is to recognize any law enforcement.
Ken Al, Cleveland County Sheriff's Office.
Frank Gold, Cleveland County Sheriff's Office.
Jonas Hanson, Gastonia Police Department.
Kelly Todd, North Carolina State Parks.
Philip Todd, Cleveland County Sheriff's Office.
Marcus Simpson, Kings Mountain Police Department, Civil Police Department, retired control, police.
Thank you, guys. And next, we'll recognize county department heads.
Tiffany Anderson, Health Department.
Carrie Mount, Assistant County Manager.
Martha Thompson, Chief Deputy County Attorney.
Jason Paulson, Public Security.
First item on the agenda for tonight is motion to adopt a proposed agenda. Commissioners, you have been presented with tonight's agenda. Is there a motion to entertain as presented or is there any amendments to the agenda?
I make a motion. We present as is, adopt as is.
Second.
Our motion's second. All those in favor will say aye. Those opposed will say no. All right. Item on the agenda tonight is a special recognition. At this time, I'll recognize Robert Faro with the American Legion World Series.
Good afternoon. Thanks for having me here. As they said, my name's Robert Faro. I'm one of the many, many volunteers of the American Legion World Series and we had, as you know, we just finished up the 2022 games. We had lots of firsts. We had the new LED lights installed that now belong to the school system. We had the canopies extended out along with the large fans. We had record attendance. The numbers, I believe, they said it was about 131, 200 for the total games. We had flyovers. We had three T-28 Trojan warbirds from Museum of Flight in Rome, Georgia. And we did have the Golden Night Schedule, but unfortunately Mother Nature stepped in and wouldn't allow that to happen. That being said, if you wanted to, you could have gone next, the weekend after that, up to New York and see them at the Yankee Stadium, but I realize it's a little bit far for us. We are planning on having them again next year, but they did want to express their thanks and their appreciation for all the support that the county, along with the city, state and federal government does for the American Legion. And they wanted to present with, to the county, lithographs signed by every one of the members who were here, again, an appreciation for all the support that you give us. Thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda is citizen recognition.
The citizen recognition portion of the meeting is an opportunity for persons wishing to appear before the commission to do so. Each presentation will be limited to three minutes. In the event a group of persons supporting or opposing the same position desiring to be heard, the board chair may require the group to designate a spokesperson. Speakers shall refrain from personal attacks and/or threats directed towards county staff, elected board members, or members of the public. Speakers shall be courteous in the language and presentation. Insults, profanity, use of vulgar language, or gestures, or other inappropriate behavior are not allowed. The board is interested in hearing citizen concerns, yet speakers should not expect a response during the meeting in the form of a comment, action, or deliberation. Topics requiring further investigation will refer to the appropriate county agency.
First name on the list, Carter York.
There you go. Thank you for your time this evening. The next word out of my mouth is probably going to make me the most hated man, but that's okay. I've got big shoulders. Cleveland County Fair. This is an agriculture and livestock community, and I do not know why it is so hard to get this stuff gunned at the fair. I've talked or called some of you on this board and the answers I've got, I think, is just not, not, not right. One of you said, well, don't want to get involved in it. If you didn't want to get involved in it, why are you on this board? One of you said, well, I don't have time. If you don't have time, why are you on this board? Another one said, well, I had some personal issues. Well, if you've got personal issues, why are you on this board? So all got started because I, or a group of us, wanted to have bigger and better shows. Today's kids, it's not like before COVID. You don't just give them a dollar and 50 cent ribbon and a little bit of money. They don't know that. They've got to have belt buckles, something that they're proud of. I'd like to see that fair go another hundred years. But you can only go down the road so long on a flat tire, you have to do one of two things. You either have to change it yourself or you have to pay somebody to change it. Now, I understand, I've been told by one of you that, you know, this is not your, can't get involved in it because it's a run by a board. Well, when you stack the board and the boards for the people that's running it, then how is it, how is it democratic by any means? I had a gentleman that's on the board tell me, well, this, this is not a dictatorship. Yes, it is. You've got two certain people that run that out there. They get to vote how they want to run. They take all the proxies. I myself think if we cannot use the fair to do livestock shows, I'd like to see the future of having something like up there at the trial center. I mean, I think these people down here deserve it. I think if anything, every time we have asked to use the fair, there's always an excuse. Don't have no money. I don't have the manpower. Well, I volunteer out there. I've been volunteering out there for the last eight years and certain things have got done, I've done. I don't want a pat on the back, don't want my name out there in lights. I don't care who gets the recognition. All I care about is if we turn that one kid that could do something stupid and get him interested in FFA programs, livestock, getting them showing, getting them to come. And gentlemen and ladies, I do not think that, if I was a kid nowadays, I wouldn't be sitting there going next year, oh, I want to go back to Cleveland County Fair. I think that's something that needs to be addressed and I would love for any of you to call me if you have any questions. I know I'm running out of time, but like I say, we're not going to keep going down the road like we're going on, on this flat tire. Something's got to be done. And I understand y'all are appropriating, you've got a certain person in this that's going to oversee, understand that. And I need to, we need to be patient, but you can't go back and say, well, what's been. I mean, they've got to be held accountable for what's been done, not what's to be done. I guess that means I'll need to sit down. Thank you, sir.
Next name is Robert Williams.
Robert Williams, 814 East Stageco, Trail in Fallston. And I believe Mr. Carter York hit the nail on the head about, if I remember, Cleveland County Commissioners given the fair a bunch of money too without any accountability. And that seems like it'd be one good place to put some accountability in doing what Mr. York has suggested. Anyway, what I wanted to talk about is public records, minutes of meetings or public records. I'd like to see everything that Mr. York and myself and others that speak at public participation are quoted properly in the minutes. I noticed that Marge Hooper, in the minutes of whatever meeting it was, her rhetorical hyperbole was quoted in depth, word by word and in quotation marks, yet my comments were not. As far, and in the public hearing, the same thing. To me, if you're in, if you're inconsistent and incomplete, you're also inaccurate. We don't need our public records, our minutes of meetings to be inaccurate and inconsistent and incomplete. If we're going to quote one person's comments in full, all person's comments need to be quoted in full. And also, another thing is, I've noticed that, and I've been told that you Commissioners have a new policy, that law enforcement is going to stand up here after meetings and people can't come up and talk to Commissioners. Well, I'd add a comment. If you weren't so low down, you wouldn't be so scared.
Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Brian.
Thank you, sir. Several items for consideration this evening. The first item, item A, are minutes from your previous three meetings, July 12th and August 2nd, regular Commissioner meeting, as well as the August 8th joint meeting with the Cleveland County School Board. Those minutes are in your packet for review and consideration. Item B is your monthly manager's report. A couple of highlights from across the organization. As you are all aware, we're continuing to work through our annual electronic audit with Thompson Price, Scott Adams, with a on-target deadline submitting that to the local government commission prior to October 31st. I'd also report that Cleveland County has received the first of 18 planned distributions as part of the North Carolina opioid settlement totaling $26 billion. We've received our first allocations of $277,102. And one additional highlight, as we've concluded our fourth year of billing in-house for EMS services, concluded last fiscal year at 71%, which is a significant improvement from when we brought that function in-house. That monthly manager's report also includes all of the lateral budget transfers for the last 30 days. Item C and D are from Tax Administration. Item C is July collection report. At the end of July, we were at 1.9% of all taxes collected. At the end of August, we were at 52.7% collected. Item D, your abatement and supplement reports for July and for August. July abatements totaled $8,068.53. Supplements totaled $25,774.62. For August, abatements totaled $118,459.96. And supplements totaled $34,840.60. Item E is also from Tax Administration. We're asking for approval for some pending refunds and releases. All of these, I would point out, are due to late applications that would systematically have been approved by staff had they been submitted in a timely fashion. The fiscal impact on the county is $7,236.33 cumulatively for all of these requests. Item F is budget amendment number three on the year relating to Cleveland County schools. This is a request to budget $1.5 million from the Commissioner-created escrow, as you approved in your budget document. Again, the $1.5 million would go to the county school system to provide for a 2% classroom teacher supplement increase up to 7.75%. Item G, budget amendment number four on the year. This is a request to budget $100,000 in additional grant funds from the North Carolina General Assembly for capital equipment at the sheriff's office. Item H is budget amendment number five from the Finance Department. As mentioned earlier, we have received our first opioid settlement allocation and we need to budget that dollars and their appropriate use, $277,102. Item I is from our Finance Department. Again, a direct grant from the North Carolina General Assembly totaling $1,456,024. The vast majority of these funds will be shared with municipalities across Cleveland County on a per capita basis, with the county retaining its proportionate share to be used towards capital needs. Item J is from the Library, budget amendment number seven. This is $87,033 from the State Library Fund. It's excess COVID-19 relief funds and we'll be using these nonrecurring dollars to offset existing operational expenses. Item K also from the Library, budget amendment number eight on the year. This also is from the State Library System, $100,000 nonrecurring appropriation that'll be used to buy mobile bookmobile, something that that team has been pursuing for some time. Item L from Social Services, budget amendment number nine. This is a $21,000 grant, one time, from the Stark State Department of Health and Human Services, and this will provide funding for foster children ages 14 to 17 in our custody at $500 per child to buy school uniforms, school clothing, as they prepare to go back and reengage in, in school this year. Item M also from Social Services, a grant in the amount of $50,000 from the Dover Foundation, and that'll be used to help assist clients with utility bills. Item N from the Health Department, this is a grant from the State Department of Health and Human Services, $175,395. This will be programmed in the Communical Disease Function for Pendipic Recovery, and all of these will be used to expand the increased need that we've seen in, in equipment and supplies and salaries in that specific function as we move forward. Item O also from the Health Department, budget amendment number 12, request to budget $15,538. Again, state dollars from the Department of Health and Human Services, and this will be specifically programmed to help provide for pregnancy journals and the promotion of National Breastfeeding Month, which was in August. And my understanding, we held a short walk in downtown a couple of weekends ago to bring focus to that, that, that issue. Item P, also from our Finance Department, budget amendment number 13. As you're all aware, we have received in the last two state budgets, significant grant funding to go towards the Justice Center project that we are well underway on. We have now arrived at a contract on the pre-construction side and we're asking to budget those grant dollars in the amount of $59,150,000 to be used towards that capital project. Item Q is from our Planning Department. We're requesting set of public hearing for Tuesday, October 4th. It'll be case number 2225 to consider rezoning at 435 Range Road from residential to residential manufactured home parks. That parcel number is 10111. It's approximately 6.4 acres. Again, that will go to the Planning Board during September and come back to this board on October 4th. And finally, for consideration, item R, which is an economic development, building reuse grants with the North Carolina Department of Commerce. We have an active economic development project we call Project SAFE that is proposing 23 new permanent full-time jobs with an average wage of $67,911. And this reuse grant would be all-state funding that flowed through the county and the county would, has to be a co-applica via this resolution. And then, once the company has fulfilled the performance requirements of that grant, at that time, we would release those dollars. So there is no risk or liability to the county. Mr. Chair, that concludes a very lengthy consent. I have to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you, Brian. Commissioners, you've represented the consent agenda. Is there, are there any discussions? Is there any discussion?
Just a comment. I'm glad you said that the dollars we're turning loose for the school is for classroom teachers only, right?
Yes, sir. Academics.
Yes.
Anybody else?
I make a motion we approve the consent agenda as it was presented.
Second.
Our motion's second. Is there any additional discussion? If not, all those in favor will say aye. Those opposed will say no. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is public hearings. We have two tonight. Madam Court, you'll read the statement.
After the public hearing has been opened, persons wishing to speak for or against the proposition will be asked to come forward and first state his or her name and address. All comments from the public are to be directed to the board. There are no comments directed at other members of the audience. If a speaker has a question, that question is to be directed to the chair. No one will be allowed to speak at the hearing more than once unless the chair recognizes a speaker a second time for rebuttal of information brought forth after the speaker has spoken. The original presentation by a speaker will be limited to no more than five minutes. The rebuttal presentation will be limited to no more than three minutes.
All right. Thank you, Chris Martin, if you'll come forward. So the first case tonight is case 22-21, is a request to rezone property at 205 Ferris Road from residential manufactured homes to, and parks to neighborhood business conditional use. This would be for a recreational vehicle park.
Thank you, Chairman. Good evening, Board. We have, the Planning Office has two items for your consideration this evening. The first is a request from property owner Tanner Maccabee, and he's asking to rezone 25 acres that he owns from residential manufactured home parks to neighborhood business conditional use for the purposes of operating a recreational vehicle park, which he has presented a site plan, and you have it in your packet and on the overhead. Property is, as I said, it's 25 acres. It's located on Ferris Road, which is near, it's near the intersection of Mountainside Drive and Stewart Road, south of Kings Mountain, near the South Carolina state line. This area consists mainly of residential uses, both on small lots and larger properties. The, so it's residential in nature. The zoning districts surrounding this property are manufactured home parks and residential. And then you have some restricted residential along Mountainside Drive through that neighborhood. The land use plan for this area designates this property as, this property and the neighboring community as secondary growth. And our land, land use, just, the land use plan describes that as being an area of the county that would maintain that rural residential character. And it encourages commercial or non-residential uses to be located near intersections of major highways. The property in question is currently, in its previous life, it has been a mobile home park, and there are currently a couple mobile homes on the property that remain. The rest of the 25 acres is vacant. And as I said, Mr. Maccabee has submitted a site plan, which you have. County staff has reviewed the plan and we have determined that it meets all the ordinances and criteria for an RV park, and those include things like setbacks and landscape screening requirements, road design, and the density or the number of RVs on the site. We have presented this case to the Planning Board and they, they recommend approval. They had a five to one vote. Their comments supporting approval was that it was near some state parks, both Crowder's Mountain and the South Carolina State Park, and that they felt like the, the proposed use of RV recreational vehicle park would not be any more impactful than the previous use of a mobile home park. And tonight, you would hold a public hearing and have any discussion and you can have any questions or discussion with staff. And I would remind the board, it's a conditional use request, so if approved, the, the petitioner or property owner could only use the property as approved, as you see on the site plan. And again, being conditional, there could be conditions that are considered for this project. And I can answer any questions.
Thank you, Chris. Board, do you have any questions or comments for Chris at this time?
How many RVs are we talking about here?
So there's two phases. Phase one is the phase, is 15 sites that you see that's closest to Ferris Road. And then the second phase would be around 64 sites that's located behind phase one. So there would be about 80 sites total.
And how many mobile homes was on the board?
Is there any other questions or comments from the board? All right. If not, at this time, we'll open the public hearing. So anyone wishing to speak for or against Planning Department case 22-21, which is a request to rezone property at 205 Ferris Road from residential manufactured homes and parks to neighborhood business conditional use for a recreational vehicle park, please come forward and state your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Julie Wasman and I live at, on Mountainside Drive in Kings Mountain. The property opened for discussion this evening borders the backside of my property. Based on the Cleveland County Unified Development Code, the current zoning of residential manufactured homes and parks allows for a maximum of two units per acre. According to the RV park ordinance, the proposed neighborhood business rezoning allows for a maximum of six RV sites per acre, which is a 200% increase in density. Rezoning of 205 Ferris Road from residential to neighborhood business for the use of an RV park is contrary to Cleveland County Board of Commissioners' comprehensive land use plan. Under the plan, we are a secondary growth area whose intention is to promote new development at lower densities. As proposed by the landowner, the rezoning for the RV park would increase the number of sites per acre by 66%, with a maximum potential increase of 200% at six RV sites per acre, which is what the RV ordinance allows. Clearly, this would not promote new development at a lower density as stated in the comprehensive land use plan. According to the plan, it is intended that service uses are clustered at major rural crossroads. Service uses are clustered at major rural crossroads for public safety. For first responders trying to get into our residential community, there is only one road, Stewart Road, which leads into our community. There are no major rural crossroads here. In the proposed area of the RP park, all three surrounding roads lead to a dead end. Rezoning from residential to neighborhood business for the use of an RV park is also inconsistent with uses stated in the Cleveland County Code of Ordinances, Article 8, Division 2, Section 2 hyphen 121E, which states the intent of this district is to encourage the location of convenience, retail establishments, professional services, and offices that will be compatible with be compatible with surrounding residential uses, to discourage intensive land use, which requires large land areas, and limit the location of large traffic generating uses to arterial streets. An RV park would violate what is stated in the Code of Ordinances because it will not be compatible with surrounding residential uses. Will encourage intensive land use that requires large land areas and will increase traffic. If completed as proposed, the RV park will pose a health and safety risk to the public. From my backyard, I can see a dilapidated rented mobile home at 205 Ferris Road with trash piled up all around it. This is evidence of how the property owner currently takes care of a rented site. Can you imagine 83 sites, RV sites, taken care of in the same manner as this? Undoubtedly, this would be a danger to public health and safety. Large RVs driving up and down our residential streets are a safety concern for our children who are running, walking, and playing nearby. A petition was signed by 76 property owners and residents opposing the rezoning for an RV park. From the petition that was provided to you, it is clear that an RV park is not in harmony with our residential neighborhood. Our residential property value will decrease if we have an RV park in our neighborhood. From our petition, it is apparent that the majority of people do not want to live beside an RV park. Because of these reasons, our residential community asks you to please vote no to the rezoning of 205 Ferris Road for use as an RV park. Thank you for your time.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm Jonas Hansen. I live at 109 Mountainside Drive. This is the third time I've stood before this board for my neighborhood. Okay? And the first time, well, ultimately, that was a black eye for Cleveland County. Let me tell you about it. There's a trailer park that was opened up by a gentleman, who I'm not going to name, just below us. He promised, oh, I'll screen everybody. I'll take care of everything. I'll make sure that we have a, a quality of life that comes into your neighborhood that won't hurt your neighborhood. Has that promise been kept? Not at any level. We have shootings. We have suspicious trailer fires. We've had predators pursuing little girls. That's what I want in my neighborhood. That's the kind of stuff that comes in these trailer parks. I spoke to, and before I override myself, Chief Schumake, are you present in this room? Chief Schumake is with Grover Volunteer Fire Department. I am also with Grover Volunteer Fire Department. In my conversation with him prior to this meeting, one of the questions that we asked is what kind of qualities of people do we have coming to these RV parks? There are several in Cleveland County. The problem is, is they've all created black eyes for Cleveland County. They've become financial burdens as increased calls for service, medical, sheriff's deputies responding to various calls. Chief Schumake informed me that there are MECA's for methamphetamines, fentanyl, heroin, all quality stuff that we don't want in our neighborhood. There's a reason that there are many people here in, from our neighborhood to respectfully request that you guys vote no on this. This is terrible. Cleveland County does not need another black eye. Now, the second time we all came together was for a road. I recognize many of you, ladies and gentlemen, as we came here and asked for assistance with a road. That was good. That helped our, our community. But once again, our community is out here in force. There are many of us out here who stand against this, this proposal. What we respectfully ask you to do is not change the zoning regulations, to maintain that rural slash residential zoning that it currently has. With that, I say thank you.
Hi. My name is John Shenna, and I live at 126 Mountainside Drive. I received a letter from the county that informed me of a request to rezone 25 acres at 205 Ferris Road, parcel 11527, which is located on the backside of my property. The rezoning would allow RV parks to be built in the middle of a residentially zoned neighborhood. The commercial nature of the campground in RV parks are, are not compatible with residential neighborhoods. This would result in RVs on our residential streets. I have never met anyone that wants an RV park in their neighborhood. So this will reduce the values of our properties. We currently live in a rural residential neighborhood with dead-end roads and very little traffic. The Cleveland County Comprehensive Land Use Plan identifies our community as a secondary growth area. The plan states, "The secondary growth area, future land use category is intended to promote new development at lower densities of up to one dwelling per acre within major subdivisions. Outside of the major subdivision, it is expected for the area to retain its rural and agricultural character, with larger residential lot sizes and small-scale convenience, retail, and service uses clustered at major rural crossroads. Rezoning for an RV park does not promote a lower-density development. It creates more. With an RV park, you have more people coming and going, traffic, noises, and lights." The land use plan notes that small-scale convenience retails, retail and, and service uses are to be placed at major rural crossroads. This neighborhood doesn't have any major rural crossroads. We don't even have any major roads. Since we as residents of the residentially zoned neighborhood want to keep our community residential, and the land use plan discourages this type of rezoning, we ask you to vote no to the rezoning of 205 Ferris Road for the use of an RV park. Thank you very much.
Howdy, y'all. I'm Bill Rice from 105 Mountainside Drive. If you're going down Ferris and you take a left right there on Mountainside, I'm the first cute little house on the left, thanks to my wife. Put a lot of hard work in that house. And this last year, we've probably spent probably $30,000 in upgrades, fence, roof, remodeled bathroom, everything. And now I found out that, that we're going to have an RV park across from us. Now, I've lived in an RV park a couple of years. The job has taken me across several states, and I've lived in RV parks. And RV parks are usually located where they're accessible, the main highways, what have you. And trust me, from experience, this is no place to put an RV park. This is just going to end up being squalor. That's what this is going to be. I, I don't know how else to put it, but I'm speaking from experience, that there's no rea, the only reason for an RV park to go here, down our road, is for a dollar. That's, that's it. Now, I invested a lot of money in my house because it seems to be the only safe place to invest any money nowadays. So RV park is just going to take away everything that I've invested, and I'll be lucky to get away with nothing, you know, with the house, you know, with a, with a park, a trailer park, if you will, whatever you want to call it. I don't know, I haven't heard anything about water, septic, any kind of, I, I guess they're going to put bigger power lines back there to run this thing, but this is not going to benefit us at all on Mountainside. Not at all. It's going to diminish the value of the whole neighborhood, and we got enough trouble with rogues as it is now. So adding to the problem is not going to help us. But I'd like to see you guys vote no, but in any case, I get a vote later on. So thank you for your time.
Good evening, Commissioners and County staff. My name is James Wasman, and I live on 122 Mountainside Drive. For those who oppose the rezoning of an RV park at 205 Ferris Roads, Road, please stand up. Thank you. I am here this evening to oppose the proposed rezoning of the currently residential zoned property at 205 Ferris Road to a neighborhood business conditional use for an RV park. For it is not in harmony with our, with our area. I'd like to draw your attention to a few local statistics of what an RV campground brings to an area. According to the PSAP data, PSAP stands for Public Safety Answering Point. We have in the city of Kings Mountain. Most noted as a 911 call center. In 2019, we had 100 calls at the RV campground located at 114 Raven Circle and 114 Easement Circle in Kings Mountain. 179 calls in 2020. And in 2021, we had 206 calls with a total of 485 calls in a three-year period of time. The nature of the calls are varying wide in range, such as drugs, threats, disturbing of the peace, loud music, and larceny. This campground has only 43 campsites and 50 tent sites. Again, in 2019, 100 calls. 2020, 179 calls. In 2021, 206 calls, for a total of 485 calls in, for a three-year period of time. According to the February 16th Shelby Star of this year, the campground at 114 Raven Circle and Raven Easement Circle has been sold to a chemical plant to mine lithium. Here's my concern. I'm concerned that this population and the crime will migrate to this area. If you vote yes, if you vote yes for this, this, this will migrate to that area. According to the Cleveland County Board of Commissioners Comprehensive Land Use Plan, it is intended that service uses are clustered at major rural crossroads, as you just heard. In our residential area, there are no major crossroads, no businesses, and all three roads lead to a dead end. For police, ambulances, and fire trucks trying to get into our residential community, there's only one road, that's Stewart Road, which leads into our community. For public health and safety, this is why service uses are clustered at major rural crossroads. Increased traffic from an 83-site RV park that is added to a one-way-in, one-way-out road will pose a safety concern for our residential community. I'm asking you tonight to vote no for the rezoning of 205 Ferris Road. Thank you.
My name is Beverly Graal. My husband Scott and I live at 252 Ferris Road. Excuse me, I'm nervous. Thank you, Mr. Gordon, for being the only one that responded to my email about this We've been notified of a request by Mr. Tanner Maccabee to re, to rezone a parcel of approximately 25 acres located on Ferris Road that is currently zoned residential manufactured homes and parks to neighborhood business conditional use with a desire to be used as a recreational vehicle park. This raises several concerns for not only Scott and I, but for numerous neighbors that will be impacted if this is passed. Ferris Road is a very narrow road, and also Mountainside Drive is off of Ferris Road, that houses a small community in which many families with children reside. These families and their children currently can enjoy being in their yards, exercising by walking or running on the road and watching the children ride bikes due to the very low traffic volume we have. An RV park would immensely decrease or eliminate that because of the increase in traffic. This in turn would take away the small-knit community we have and put these families in danger. By placing a recreational park in the middle of a residential community, the area would begin to be neglected, which will severely impact the value of properties. Residents of these parks are typically temporary and have no desire to maintain the area around them. There is a high probability there would be an uptick in crime as well due to the temporary status of the residents. Lastly, based on the public records, Mr. Maccabee is a co-owner of this property and obtained ownership in February of 2022. The property has been in the Hardison family since approximately 2003, and the current co-owner, Joseph Hardison, has never requested this zoning change in the past. Mr. Maccabee seems to have no interest in the well-being of our community, which is very concerning. He is only concerned for his financial gain while we desire to keep this area family-oriented and not commercialized. Please do not grant this rezoning to Mr. Maccabee for the above-listed reasons and many other reasons from myself and others in this community. Our livelihood depends on this. Thank you very much.
I had not prepared to speak, but I'm, that bottom, my name is Mary Krieger. I was one of the first 11 homes in this community. At the time, we had restrictions. It was like a family. We had block parties. And then, a man by the initials MB came in and put that trailer park. And it is like a major meth lab, constantly caused down there and disturbance. It destroyed our community. And at the time, no trailers were allowed, but there are now. And even behind, I'd never heard that that was called a trailer park. At most, there was eight trailers, and every one of them, within months, looked like slum. This little dock down here, that purple at the beginning, it's a curve that you would probably have to go 15 miles an hour because it is a sharp turn. Right there, there is one trailer. Within half of his property is where the bus lot, where they, all the kids from that neighborhood meet their buses. We recently, in the last two and a half years, had our road repaid, and in that, we had understood that buses could come down our road. But no, after we, even our home is 8,600 that we were paying on monthly for the road that was paved, and no, the buses were not allowed to come down there. That is where children from kindergarten on up meet. And right within, from here to here is where you're going to be driving into that so-called RV. It's going to take one life to be hurt, and then everybody will wake up. This was a bad idea. I no longer live in the home. I rent it to my granddaughter. She has my great-grandchild. The thought of him risking his life to live in the neighborhood that we own since 1984, it's heartbreaking. I already lost one daughter on Dixon School Road. I do not want to lose a grandchild. So please consider the lives of the innocent that... So please consider the lives of the innocent that surround this lot. Because it would be nothing more than people that cannot afford housing to come sit in a trailer and drink their beer and smoke their pot while other hard-working Americans are working to have a decent home and provide for their children. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Amy Smith. I live at 130 Mountainside Drive. My property backs up to the property you're talking here. They're right behind me. Some of my major concerns are the people that will be living in that park. I have a 14-year-old daughter. I already have to keep a watch on the sex offenders list to look out for the other trailer park right up the road. I really don't want to have to worry about what's behind me also. Other residents have already brought up some other valid concerns. Children is one of my main things. The children are outside. They're playing. They're wa...
Five acres. I can have two mobile homes per spot. That's 50 mobile homes. I don't want to be a landlord tenant. That's the beauty of an RV park. Two weeks maximum at my RV park. After two weeks, you can go down the road. You present me with issues or problems, you go down the road. 50 mobile homes, multi-family homes, mom, dad, kids, two cars per home. We're talking about traffic issues and violations and safety issues. That's going to be daily traffic every day, coming and going to work. The traffic will go up. That's not my intentions. If you've ever been to an RV park, you check in, you check out. You have one car, you drive up and down. The issue with the traffic with RVs coming and going up and down the road, AD's not coming up and down the road every day. There will be a check-in and a check-out. This is potential use. My architect, my landscape architect said, hey, let's draw it to the max potential. We don't have to come do this three more times. My initial purpose for all this was 15 to 30 sites. If I get 15 to 30 sites, I'm a blessed man. Two weeks maximum at my park, this will be a full-time career for me. This ain't no hobby. This ain't no permanent site. This ain't no permanent dwelling. This isn't going to be anything like what Kings Mountain has already saw. There'll be a year, a date, of RV that is... Can come into my park. It has to be presentable. It has to be up-kept. It can't be something you're going to work on in the driveway. I hear all these safety concerns and things like that. They're pulling an RV. How fast can they really go? These things are heavy. This is a DOT road. It is approved for these type of vehicles to be on this road. There is concerns with the trees and things that are hanging over Ferris Road. And with an RV park there, I feel like we have leverage to clean that road up. It's already zoned residential mobile home park. The point of a business is to make a dollar. I'm trying to create generational wealth for my family. I remember being a toddler in diapers, planting seeds in that ground. I look in this crowd, I see people that know me and have seen me growing up. They haven't seen me in a long time, but here I am. I've been on that property my whole life. That property is something to me. It's a part of me. It's not a hobby. This ain't a recreational thing. This ain't something I'm going to get done and say, you know what? I'm finished. I'm going to go into the car business. This is going to be a lifestyle, 365. So I'm voting yeah. I mean, I'm asking for a vote of yes, of your support. The biggest problem here is change, right? People don't like change. I do apologize to the community that they're seeing this last minute. That's not on me. The planning board's in direction of all that. If I'd have known what was going on... I knew the day of the planning meeting that that was the first meeting. I reached out to Henry once, twice, finally on the third time, he responded back and let me know the date of the first meeting. We had some understanding that day. I had some controversy with some talks outside. I felt like we left there with some type of understanding. The property is going to change in one shape or fashion. And that's not a threat. That's not blackmail. I acquired this property to make use of it. My family did this in the 90s. They were 50-odd trailers that went up and down over the course of 10 years before we had to relinquish it, and then we got it back in 2003. They will be used to this property. Things will change on 205 Ferris Road, but I want them to change in the good, not the bad. I want to be able to control this to my best ability because I will be head over everything. Joseph owned the property for the last 10 years. I've always been there. I've always been there in the background. I've been there to support him and this property. And I'm going to continue to do that as long as I can. I want y'all to consider yes to this. This is going to be good for Kings Mountain. Kings Mountain is up and coming. It's going to be the place to be in the next 10 years. I want to give people an option where they can stay. There's a lot of traffic coming there, and I want to be able to control what traffic does come to my area. Thank y'all for y'all's time. Y'all have a nice night.
Hi, my name is Kelly Beware. I live at 200 Stewart Road. I'm sorry, I have severe anxiety and I was not going to speak until he just spoke. I just want to say that if he acquired this property in February, and he says that this property that was shown earlier will be cleaned up in October, why is he waiting until it was brought up now to say it's going to be cleaned up? Why has he not cleaned it up in the last, how many months? Seven, eight months that it's been since he acquired it? So he's all of a sudden going to clean it up now? He's not going to clean anything up. He's going to keep it the way it is, and it's just going to get worse. And I don't want it worse. I have enough traffic as it is. I live on Stewart Road. It's one-way in, one-way out. There is no place for anybody to walk except on the street. I have had numerous people come just randomly knock on my door. I don't need anybody else to come knock on my door. I bought my property to be peaceful, and I don't want people to ruin that. So please don't take into consideration what he said. If he was going to clean it up, he would have done it by now. He wouldn't have waited until somebody brought up something to you all before he made, you know, something, oh, it's going to be cleaned up next month. Clean it up beforehand and then say something. Don't wait and do it. So I just want you to vote no.
Good evening, Board. My name is Mark Simpson. I live 2205 Taylor Road here in Shelby, North Carolina. Tanner McAbey is my son-in-law, and I know this property well because he and I have hunted it for years. Every Thanksgiving Day, I've killed a deer back there on that property. It's my sweet spot. Matter of fact, I got a deer blind back there. He says it's not even his deer blind, it's mine. I've had a lot of good luck out of there. In response to everything that's been said here today, Cleveland County is an up-and-growing area. I mean, it's growing by leaps and bounds. And anybody that thinks that the casino area down there is not going to expand out and start growing and multiplying, they're not in touch with reality. There are so many building projects that are going to be coming in the future. What happens when construction companies come in? They bring workers. What do those workers do? They bring RVs because they don't want to pay a hotel bill. They stay in an RV park. Where are these people going to stay if they don't have places they can go? There are some nice RV parks around. Has anybody ever been to the one up on 226 on the right, just north of Pogful? That's a nice RV park down there. Doesn't have to be trash. Whereas 26... I'm a retired police officer. 26 years of policing. I can't count. I don't have... There's not other fingers and toes in this room to count how many times I've had calls for service in mobile home parks. Bad stuff. Every day, all day, all night. I've never once got a call to go to an RV park. I understand there's problems at RV parks because anytime somebody's living that close, it's like, you know, if your nearest neighbor's 300 yards that way, you're probably not going to be in conflict because you don't have to see them all the time. When you're in close like that, there's going to be disputes. And that's when you call the police and whoever and get it settled. But anybody that thinks this isn't going to be a growing area, that area is going to grow by leaps and bounds. Tanner's got a vision for this property. And the only reason that property hasn't been cleaned up so far is because those people are being evicted in October. You can't clean out something when somebody's already living there. They're going to be evicted. So the property down there, I've helped him clean some of it off. I don't have the time to stay down there cleaning it off, but it's a nice property. And it has the potential to be a nice property, I'll put it that way. He's already got some infrastructure in place. There's already some septic systems down there where he had the mobile home, or not he, but where there was a mobile home park before. And it's already zoned for mobile home park instead of an RV park. So there's going to be something there regardless. The question is, do you want a mobile home park or do you want an RV park? My experience of going through RV parks is they're a lot better kept when your people aren't staying in there all the time, constantly, just taking up residence there. That's all I really have to say, other than I support my son-in-law, and I'll be there to help him with whatever he needs. And I appreciate your consideration in this. Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else wishing to speak for or against Plan and Case 22-21? Request to rezon property at 205 Ferris Road from residential manufactured homes and parks to neighborhood business conditional use for a recreational vehicle park. If so, please come forward and state your name and address. Sir, you've already spoken. Sorry.
My name is Greg Wood, Mr. Chairman. I live at 147 Stewart Road.
Okay.
Residents of Stewart Road are going to catch all this traffic. It doesn't split off or anything until it passes Stewart Road. The road's not designed for all this traffic. And he's claiming that people are going to check in, but then they're going to forget fuel, have to go back for fuel. For groceries, have to go back for groceries. We just don't think Stewart Road is made as a secondary road for all that traffic, plus the trash and the element that's going to come with it. Please vote no.
All right, is there anyone else wishing to speak for or against Plan and Case 22-21? Request to rezon property at 205 Ferris Road from residential manufactured homes and parks to neighborhood business conditional use for a recreational vehicle park. If so, please come forward and state your name and address. All right, see you none.
Yeah, my name's Robert Williams. One of the things I mentioned before is public records and meetings and meetings past that I've made some statements to the Commissioners and they weren't accurately stated in the minutes. Well, I spoke in a public hearing very similar to this one that just happened. And what I suggested to the Commissioners then, I want to suggest to the Commissioners now. I'm going to restate what I said before. My suggestion is, and my suggestion is, when in doubt, don't do it. Sitting right there, I was sitting right there about the same seat. I listened to people before. And again, I don't know any of these people, not a one. But I've listened to all of them, and there's plenty of doubt. And your planning board is not unanimous. Just like the previous time, it was tied. And my recommendation is, hey, if you don't have enough information to get a unanimous planning board, there's a doubt somewhere. And when there's a doubt, don't do it. And that's what I'm going to recommend again. Sounds to me like it just makes common sense. There's a lot of people who've got a lot of concerns. And I've got a concern. I'm a citizen of Cleveland County too. If somebody comes and wants to put a RV park right next to me, and I deal with traffic every day, probably more than they'll ever see. Fosston, I live right beside Fosston School, and it's a traffic jam every day, twice a day, when school's in session. So I'll restate, my suggestion is, when you have a doubt, vote no. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak for or against Plan and Case 22-21? All right, if not, public hearing is now closed. Commissioners, what questions or discussions do you have?
Mr. Chairman, can I ask Chris if this would be considered spot zoning?
Chris, can you come back up?
To answer that question, I think we'd all want to understand that it's a subjective answer. Typically, spot zoning, you're going to look at parcel size. You're going to look at compatibility with uses in the area. And then you want to look at the requested district as opposed to the current district and the districts around it. You know, the zoning district that's being requested is neighborhood business. It allows for residential uses. So in that aspect, one could consider it not to be spot zoning. I think with this case, you know, you guys, you know, some of the factors that you want to consider would be more about the compatibility with not only the area, but the land use plan, and then zoning district compatibility.
Did you say it would not be considered spot zoning?
I wouldn't consider this spot zoning because the requested district allows similar uses.
And the number of acreage.
It's a large tract, and the requested district allows similar uses that are in this area.
Do you... Excuse me. Do you have a map that you can show us the zoning, all of the residential uses around it?
Yes, we do. It's the one with the...
Pardon my apologies.
So the requested parcel is outlined in black. And again, it's...
We can't... Do you have a way of showing us a larger area around and what the zoning is?
An aerial view of overhead.
An aerial view?
Yeah.
Yes, we have an aerial view.
You have restricted residential and with residential and then the REM?
Yeah, you saw... What you saw there was three different zoning districts. Restricted, the traditional residential, and then the manufactured home park residential. So you're seeing with that map, you're seeing all areas of the residential district.
Yeah, the zoning is what I was... And on this one, you can scroll out where we can see a bigger area. Okay, well, you've gone so far now, you can't figure out where we are.
It's that black track right there.
Yeah, it's... Yeah.
It was right there.
And she's the negative.
Nothing ever works good when you're under pressure, so just relax. So to change to what they're asking is going to make... Would make this neighborhood business, right?
That's correct.
Okay. And are there anything that you can see there that I don't? That is already business?
It is not.
So there's no business there?
It's all different variations of residential zoning districts.
Okay. So if there's no business anywhere around, and they're wanting to change it to business, how is that not spot zoning?
Well, the reason I say that is because neighborhood business also allows residential uses. It's a mixed-use district with both residential and... And the businesses that you typically find in residential zoning districts, if you look at the table and if you read the definition of neighborhood business, it describes businesses that are meant to serve a community. So even the businesses that are allowed in neighborhood business are... Should be intended or should have the purpose of serving a neighborhood.
And the majority of the time, those businesses are smaller businesses.
Right. Hair salons, convenience stores.
Yeah. I don't see how this fits into any of that criteria. Yeah, I don't see how this fits into any of that criteria.
I guess my concern is knowing the area of Stewart Road and the different ones that's dead end. And when you said for neighborhood or general business, you would have a two fair, am I saying it right? You've got a road that runs all the way through, a major road, or a major intersection, one of the others. So that's what I would question, you know, is it not creating something that we don't see?
As far as traffic?
Traffic and safety. Because like I say, it does have a road that goes all the way through that's a major road.
Yes, that's correct. Ferris roads, the dead-end roads, so is mountainside. And then they, they both empty out into Stewart Road.
Well, I've always tried to figure out how do, how do we keep an area safe? And how do we change it and not have little spot zones of different, different groups or wherever? And for quite a while now, I think every, every vote that we've taken, we've went against that, spot zoning. And we've, we did some stuff that we've tried to bring non-compliant properties into compliant. I think if we vote this way, all we're doing is making a non-compliant area out of a compliant area. So unless there's other questions, I'm ready to make a motion that we deny the, the resolution to, to change the zoning.
I'd like to second that.
All right, we have a motion to second, that motion was to deny the request?
Yes, sir.
Is there any other questions or discussion? Are there any other questions or discussion? If not, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed will say no. Next case on the agenda tonight is planning case 20-22-20. This is a request to rezone property at 1256 Cleveland Avenue from residential to general business. Mr. Martin?
Thank you, Chairman. Our next item is a continuation from your last month's meeting. You opened a hearing and heard staff present the request and then heard from some, some citizens. I'll give you a recap, what the, what's being requested from the property owner, Mr. Mike Brown. He's asking to change the zoning of a 50-acre tract of land that he owns from residential to general business. This parcel is located along Highway 226 between Patterson Springs and Grover, and it's just south of Buffalo Creek. The surrounding zoning districts are residential, which is also the zoning district of the, the requested parcel. The land use plan, like the last case, the land use plan designates this area and predicts that it'll be secondary growth area. And that area in our land use plan, it encourages the, the maintenance or to maintain a rural character of an area. And it also encourages for business uses to be located along major crossroads or major intersections. We've presented this case to the planning board. They recommended three to one to deny. And their comments supporting that decision was that it was inconsistent with the land use plan's designation of secondary growth area, which again encouraged residential development and business uses to be along major intersections. And I can answer any questions and the public hearing is still open from the last meeting.
Okay, so anyone wishing to speak for or against planning case 20, this is 22-20. 22-20, which is request to rezone property at 1256 Cleveland Avenue from residential to general business. Please come forward and state your name and address.
Beat you up, yeah.
Yes, you did.
Roy James, 106 Silverado Drive, straight across from where the general consensus is that a RV park is going up. And I don't know if the attorney will say that or not, but that's our thought. The owner owned one named Hound Drive-In and, and RV Park. And on numerous occasions, and this is easy to find, there was multiple problems with that area for drugs, larceny. Well, you name it. Criminal, if not criminal, civil problems occurred. We moved out to Silverado because, I, I lived in the city of Shelby for a long time. And we moved out there because we both love horses, straight across the street. And believe me, that's a problem when you've got firecrackers and et cetera happening. All of my neighbors are opposed to this. And that's the vote that we are asking you to cast. Other than that, thanks for your time.
Hello, Board. My name's Preston Brown, 305 Chestnut Ridge Road in Kings Mountain.
I am the operator, manager of Hound's Drive-In Theater. So we are here today to ask the Board to let us build this, which is the Drive-In Theater. This is what I want to put on the property. What we have now on the property is three screens, and I want to put the exact same thing on the property. We have made Time Magazine twice over the last seven years. We've made Martha Stewart Living Group once. We've been on 60 Minutes all over TV. It is a professionally-run business. It is A1, high-tech, very professional. We are the, when I say, we are the number-one theater. When I say theater, I don't mean drive-ins, I mean theater. We do, our grosses are the highest across the nation, right here in Little Kings Mountain. So I want to put that right back here. As you all know, we sold, sold the property to the Lithian Company. And so we're looking for someplace to go. So this is one place we have looked at because I'm from Cleveland County, I've been here, raised here, and I'd like to stay here. I have been approached by Lincoln County, Hickory, and Greenville to build there. Do I want to? No, I want to stay right here. So I'd like to build the same theater with a little bit more, some of the knowledge that I didn't know before that I now have learned. I'd like to put it into this, this new theater. So we'd like to put three screens on the property. We, I have, under the impression that some are concerned about the traffic. We've learned how to keep the traffic off the road by doing, which is called stacking. Right now, we were able to get 88 cars off the road before we opened, and we opened up early to get the cars off the road. So we have no more problems with any kind of traffic issues. Yes, we did the very first season. Now we've got two extra screens and we have zero problems. We've learned, we've learned how to fix those problems. As far as noise, lights, there is no noise, zero noise, because everyone uses their car stereo to listen to the, to the movies. So there's really no noise at all. And as far as lights, there's no lights because we want it to be as dark as we can. So there are concerns that I've, that I've heard about that, but I can assure you there will be nothing like that. This pla, the place that we have now is extremely professional and we bring in people from all over the state, from all the way to South Carolina, Statesville, to Concord, Hickory, of course, and Greenville, all over the place. We have a little over, right at 3 million, a little less than 3 million followers that follow us. And like I said, we are the number-one theater. And that's a, it's a big, you know, something I'm very proud of that we've done. Yes, we have a campground on the property at where we're at right now. It was a problem, it was a major problem because we did have some drugs. We did have people coming to stay in that were causing problems. I took over. I'm 100% control of that property now, and we have zero problems, zero. If you go take a look at the property, you'll see it is immaculate. It is very professional. We only allow the campers to stay for two weeks. But we're not really asking for, as far as a campground. We may want to put maybe 25 campers on the property, campsites in the future. But right now, I want to put the Drive-In Theater. That's what I want, that's where the bread and butter is. That's what, what all the families come to see and what they enjoy. So I hope you guys will consider it, and I know the public is concerned about it. But it's a, we, it is a big thing, right here in Cleveland County, right here in Little Kings Mountain. We, when you look across the nation, we are the number-one. And I don't want to move to Lincoln or Hickory or Greenville. I'd like to stay here. And I, and the road is perfect, perfect for it. We have the, it's a big main highway road that's traveled a lot and, you know, it's just perfect for us. So I hope you guys will consider it and I hope you'll vote yes. Thank you.
I'm a little short. Good afternoon. My name is Natalie Connor. I am a resident of Grover, North Carolina, at 136 Lemonwood Lane. We actually live just above Buffalo Creek. I'm here today on behalf of my family and many concerned neighbors. We know there's a push to open this new Drive-In slash campground, which sounds like that's the long-term goal here, from the owner of the Hound's campground in Drive-In in Kings Mountain. We are strongly against this happening. My husband and I moved to Grover two and a half years ago and are currently building a house on family-owned land. We have two children and we wanted to move to the county from the city for a quieter way of life, where our kids can play outside, we can enjoy the peacefulness of where we live. And allowing this Drive-In slash campground to move into our quiet area will disrupt all of this. There are tons of call logs where the police have been called out to Hound's campground due to drugs, violence, many other things. We do not want this in our community, in our neighborhoods. These people involved have been involved with many illegal activities. And again, we do not want or need this type of behavior in our community or our neighborhood. All of you, take an oath to do what's best for our county and for our communities. Please do what's right for the people and shut this down. Please vote no. We do not want it. Maybe Lincoln or Hickory would be great for this. But the small little town of Patterson Springs and Grover does not want this. We appreciate your time and thoughtfulness toward this matter, but do what's, do, do not do what is best for just one man. Do what's best and what's right for our families and our neighbors who live in this area. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Tim? Doug? Ronnie? Deb? I've been a Cle, a citizen of Cleveland County all my life. I was born and raised between Patterson Springs and Grover. I retired from the city of Kings Mountain for 25 years. I know Mike Brown, well, let's put it this way, I know of Mike Brown. I was garage superintendent over there. And I've heard a lot of horror stories about his campground. I never was in his campground, but I do know law enforcement has to come through the garage and they've had horror stories about this man's campground. Now, I can stand up here and probably preach all afternoon. But this is wrong. This is wrong. I own 45 acres across the creek from this. Well, correction, I gave my dollar and all to 2.65 acres. I don't own 45 acres now, I own 42, 42 something. But my brother owns across the creek from this. There's a lot of people in the community down there that's right around this area that does not want this. And I'm hoping that y'all vote no on this. Because it's going to really upset me if you don't. And I appreciate your time.
Sir, what is your name for the record? Your name?
Thomas Arakon.
Good evening. My name is Diane Villanueva. And I live at 107 Silverado Drive, which is right smack across from that property. I can't say that I've been a citizen of Cleveland County all my life, so we've been 16 years. I love this place. We moved to Grover because we wanted quiet, we wanted peace. We didn't want all this traffic that this would happen. Can't, I can't imagine having these people coming in and out and in and out and in and out. Every two weeks, but every day, there's going to be somebody coming in because somebody's going to be leaving. Please vote no. Let us have our quiet community, our peace. There is no peace in the world anymore. So when we find a quiet little corner where we can have some peace, please let us have that. Don't take it away from us. Thank you. Vote no, thank you.
Anybody speak, come up and speak as long as it's about this?
As long as it's about this public hearing.
Bill, I know y'all might better get the sweaters out because I always said if I ever got out here and started politicking, you know what would freeze over. But I've been with Randy Connor years at the Cleveland County Fair, and I don't have a dog in this spite, but there's not a finer man in this room. I've never heard him, when people would say GD, he'd go, hmm. Yeah, I just want y'all to know, if that man strongly believes in it, I would go with his vote. And I'm Carter York, and I guess I'm sticking my nose where it don't belong, but maybe I'll get into it. But thank you for your time, just wanted you to know.
My name is Dee Hayes. I live at 1172 Cleveland Avenue. I have 64 acres and the back end of mine butts up almost to his, to that property. My major concern is the traffic. She said we live on a quiet, in a quiet area, we do. But we're on a 55 mile an hour speed limit going down Cleveland Avenue. That's a downhill, downhill run, and these trucks are going back and forth all the time. I don't think it's good to have a business where you're going to be pulling trailers in and out of there. It's not safe. And I don't want a campground there either. Please vote no.
All right, is there anyone else wishing?
Good evening. I am Angela McKee. My husband Steve is here with me. We live at 2629 Cleveland Avenue. As a number of people who have spoken already tonight talk about the number of acreage that they have in this little area of Grover, because most of us live on family farms. We have 22, we have 13 acres on one side, which butts up, if you go across the bridge, we are right across the bridge. We can see this property from our house. We have 22 acres on the other side. We, we own and operate a family farm with cattle and a horse and chickens. We have, we have... We have, um, we have a daughter who bought a house at 2621 Cleveland Avenue, and a son who bought a house at 2619 Cleveland Avenue. And we all live in a little, small stretch. Because Grover is not a major city. It's a little town for families and farms and community. We're concerned. She said that the speed limit is 55. The speed limit is not 55. Recently, the speed limit was lower to 50. That is because of the large number of fatalities that have happened on this road in the stretch. Number of them happening in my front yard. There've been a number of guardrails put up, up and down the road on Cleveland Avenue because of the number of wrecks. And so the amount of traffic, you talk about it being a main road. We're not in a main intersection. We're in the, it's a, just a main stretch that cuts through a small town and a small community. And so the concern here is if you add extra traffic to this road, it's gonna put the, those of us that travel that road on a daily basis to go to work, to and from work, in danger, higher danger, the number of, the number of traffic on the road. We're middle-class families. We're not wealthy. I'm a school teacher. My husband's a retired police officer. My daughter's a teacher. And my, my family's, we don't, we're not wealthy. What we do have, we worked really hard for. We don't want anything coming into our community that's gonna take away from our property value. Because like we said, that, in a time that's very difficult, that's a lot of where our wealth is, in our property. So things that cause our property value to go down impacts our families tremendously. And so I ask you to please consider the amount of crime that it would bring to our community, the number of people that it would bring, just the distraction that it would bring to the farms and the families that live in this small town. Please consider voting no.
Good evening. My name is Steve McKee. My wife said most of it for me. But I've lived in Cleveland County almost 59 years. Lived in 20, right here at 2636 2629 Cleveland Avenue since 1970. I just want to restate that it's nice residential land, beautiful land. You go outside and see the tree lines, and it is getting to be a very busy road. And where the gentleman is wanting to put the trailer park, movie theater, it is in a kind of uphill, very bad curve right there. They have put guardrails across from it. It's a lot of traffic. It's just a beautiful, beautiful neighborhood. Very family-oriented. A lot of family live there. Our neighbors own a lot of land, it's family all the way up the hill. And we just really, really appreciate the vote no. Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak for or against Planning Department Case 22-20 request?
My name is Mike Brown. I wanted all the property, and my son runs everything for me. We did not realize that we were going to have all kind of trouble to find a piece of property, or we'd have never sold the property to the mine. I've been told by the planning director that I can put a drive-in there right now with no rezoning. I have to stay 400 feet off the road. Can't go back no further. But if you look right here, we'd like to put our screens, put the concession stand here, put the screens here, here, and here. But if we have to, we can come back and put a screen here, 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 and here. This has to be on four different separate, uh, four separate, uh, projector rings. But he told me that if I want to do that, we could do that now without any rezoning or anything. But we want to make it nice like we have right now. Like Preston said, we are the number-one drive-in and walk-in theaters in the whole United States. And we didn't get there by putting a crappy place up. We've got about $3 million, well, right now, that we got right now, and $3 million to put back into county is gonna bring a whole lot of revenue in. We, I just paid taxes for the state today for August, was $10,700 in sales tax. So that should show you what kind of business that we got. Once again, I want to show you these pictures and let y'all pass them around. 3 billion, Air State Magazine twice. You take these and pass them down right here, sir. Let you see that. It's not a dumpy place. It's not like the best street drive-in or Diane 25. It's high-tech. It's high-tech. And if you don't want to approve our case tonight, that's up to y'all. But we can still put the drive-in there. It's what the planning director told me. I just would have to do it a different way, but I wanted to do it better, like what we got now, and have a first-class place. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else wishing to speak for or against Planning Case 22-20?
Hey, my name is Lisa James. I live at 106 Silverado Drive. My husband spoke earlier and said most of the things I need to say. But no, we, we don't want that there. And if I can approach, I didn't know that I needed a big screen or a blown-up picture. Can I come forward?
Yes, start with it.
Is that first class? My dog don't do that. She doesn't look like that. You vote public? No.
It's blackout.
There you go. And Johnson? That's not first class. I was talking to Mike back center. And also, the traffic is bad down that road. And we have horses. We used to have cows, and I don't know if you guys ever had any to get out, you know? We had one to get out last week. And a volunteer for fire department, a guy that works for Grover, he drives slow, 4:30 in the morning. They call and want to know, do I have horses yet? You have a horse that's been hit twice in a row. So my husband goes up and I'm just, I call the vet to put him down. But luckily, the volunteer fire department gentleman drove slow. He said, I drive slow through here. It's dark. But the woman behind him went on around and hit him the second time. But just thankfully, I don't know how he, he did it, but he made it through. But I'm just asking you guys to please vote no. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? I have to read this one more time. Anyone else wishing to speak for or against Planning Department Case 22-20, request to rezone property at 1256 Cleveland Avenue from residential to general business? Please come forward and state your name and address. All right, see you done. Public hearing is now closed. Commissioners, any questions or discussion?
I got a question with Chris.
Chris, can you come back up front?
He made a statement he didn't need to rezone due to driving. Is that correct?
So our, our ordinance describes an overlay zoning district corridor protection. We've talked a lot, a lot about it in the past. But it is an overlay zoning district over all North Carolina state highways. And Highway 226 is considered a state highway. So there are a number of business uses that are allowed on, on Highway 226.
But he said, yes, he can.
Yes, he could. And it, it, the code describes that that allowance extends 500 feet from the road along any property.
Okay. And I guess I'd like to add, Preston the question. Preston would just stand up right there and be fine. You said you, you're not interested in the campsite. You're interested in the drive-in theater.
Yes.
Okay.
The only reason I would be interested is in campsites because I do have some employees that stay on the property, watch it.
But you wouldn't be satisfied with the drive-in?
Yes, I would.
Okay. So my question is, Al, if everybody was here tonight, only one person even addressed the drive-in, everybody else was against RV park, the campground, don't want the campground. Nobody except one person spoke against the drive-in? That's, that's over with? Public hearing's over with?
Well, we didn't know about it. How could we?
I mean, he, he said that right off the bat, so you know what I'm saying. That. She did say the dri, she did say the drive-in. My mistake then, my mistake then. But the majority of the people were against the RV parks. We're here the whole time. RV parks, okay? But if, if he doesn't have to have rezoning to do what he's wanting to do, then I don't see any reason to continue this if all he wants is to drive in. Because any decision we make is not going to affect him at all, is it? I'd. It's, it's a.
Uh, public hearing's over.
It, it would depend on how the owner wants to develop the property. If he'd like to extend beyond the 500 feet and use more of the property than he would need.
But if he don't want to extend that, he can do it regardless of what decision we make.
That's correct. And just to clarify too with the board, that general business is a business zoning district that allows RV parks, which was mentioned here today. Corridor protection is a, an overlay zoning district that does not allow RV parks. But it does allow a lot of other business uses, like the movie theater. And I'll remind the board too that the petition that you, that you have in front of you is simply to, a request to rezon to general business. It's not a conditional type of request where a specific uses are picked out.
Can we apply that?
You could not. If, the petitioner would have to re-petition the board and submit a plan and show how they want to use the property.
So even, even if we say, and we turn his request down tonight, he can go in and apply for a permit tomorrow to build his drive-in theater. Is that correct?
That's correct. There's, like I said, there's a number of uses, business uses that are allowed in that corridor.
Yeah, so let, so let's pull up that corridor overlay. But I have a question about that too. So I understood you to say the corridor protection plan overlay has limited use, uses. So that use, that list of use is not as wide or broad as general business?
It is not.
So can you talk to, talk to that?
So the uses that you'd find in that corridor are probably a step up from the neighborhood business. There, you're going to find a lot of office use, retail use, and recreational use.
And that's within 500 feet of the road?
500 feet of the road.
And this board, this board don't have a say in that?
That's correct. This, that's the applied zoning district, which is ordinance. And as opposed to the general business zoning district, you, it allows all of that, plus more intense business uses, like construction companies or anything short of.
If this property was ever sold, then it could go to anything that's general business too, right? Or, or even if, they could change their mind and do it if it's zoned general business.
If it was zoned as general business, yeah, then any future property owner could use it for anything allowed in general business. That's the highway corridor. So, yeah, so the, um, the areas shaded in red represent the area that would be allowed, that would benefit from the highway corridor zoning overlay.
So that would be the property that could be used for the drive-in? Am I understanding that right?
That's correct. And this, this overlay applies to all North Carolina state highways, such as 226, Highway 18, 180, 74, all of them in, in the county.
So what has to be within that 500 foot? If you were, if we were talking about a drop and how, what has to be in that, all, the whole business? Or just the screens or?
I would consider all components, all parts of the business.
Are there any other businesses near here? Would this be considered spot-zoned again? Considered an overlay?
So, and I, I hate to never answer that spot-zoning question directly, but I think that when you look at the considerations for spot-zoning, it's a large tract of land. However, the, the district that's being requested is much different than the districts surrounding it. So I think this one checks a couple of boxes for spot-zoning.
Isn't there somewhere on the other side of the creek towards Patterson Springs on the right, there may be non-compliant businesses, but they are business along the road there, aren't they?
Yeah, they're, you know, I would consider this area mostly residential. But being on a highway, you're going to find some sporadic business uses along 226.
Yeah, so, so that area is mainly a residential area. The overlay sort of changes that a little bit, but.
That's right.
But it is a residential area.
Yeah.
So, so to approve his request tonight, then we're going to change it from residential to, uh, neighborhood business?
No, it's general business.
General, general business, which is all, is any type of business.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a, that's a big, that's a big difference from residential.
The planning board turned this one down, right? Or they, they voted no?
They voted three to one to recommend denial. And their, their comments supporting that were that it did not comply with the land use plan. Land use plan, again, designates this area as secondary growth, and then it goes on and describes that as being areas of the county that you want to maintain rural character and encourage your businesses to be along your intersections. And land use plan felt that it didn't meet that, that description.
Well, if nobody else has anything to say, I agree with the planning board. I think it doesn't fit in that area. And I'll make a motion we deny.
Hold on a second.
So a motion second to deny the request at the Case 22-20. Is there any other discussion or questions? If not, all is available, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed will say no?
No.
Four to one. Next item on the agenda is regular agenda. This time I recognize Rhett Melton here with Partnerships with Partners Behavior Health.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. She's going to bring up the PowerPoint.
Okay, get ready.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. I know you've already had a long meeting, so I'll be brief. But I did want to give you a little bit of an update about some of the things going on at Partners Health Management, because it does affect a fairly large group of citizens in the community. When I was here last year, I talked to you about some of the forthcoming changes around one of the topics. But there's really three areas I want to touch on very quickly. One is about Medicaid transformation in North Carolina. One's about the opioid response and the epidemic activities that we have. And then another, just to talk about Partners' connection to a lot of the efforts and initiatives that you have in the county for your health priorities. So just a, a little bit about Medicaid transformation. There are three major parts of Medicaid that are being transformed in the state of North Carolina. One is called standard plans, and the other two, tailored plans and Medicaid direct, are the two that impact, are impacted by Partners' work. The, what, what determines what a member, what a Medicaid recipient in Cleveland County, which plan they participate in, it's dependent upon what their health need is, what their primary health need. So if somebody has a physical health need but not a lot of behavioral health needs, they'll fit into a standard plan. If somebody has significant behavioral health needs and, and also has some physical health needs, but, but has a prime, a predominant behavioral health need, they're going to be in what's called the tailored plan. And anybody that's not in one of those two by criteria fits in that third category, which is the Medicaid direct. Partners will be managing those last two, the, the tailored plan and the Medicaid direct. So with that, you know, what you're accustomed to, to working with us on is about physical, or about behavioral health and intellectual and developmental disability care. What will change when we launch these, these Medicaid direct and tailored plans is that not only will we be responsible for those pieces, the, the behavioral health and the, the behavioral health and intellectual developmental disability care for members, we also will be responsible for all their physical care, as well as all of their pharmacy care. So managed care is not new in North Carolina. It's certainly not, not new to the county. What the managed care components that you're currently aware of is that the LME MCO is part. What the managed care components that you're currently aware of is that the LME MCOs partners, we began to manage Medicaid care in North Carolina in 2013. You know, if you remember at the time, we were a nine-county area program, and when I was here with, before you last year, I talked about the expansion. So we've been the behavioral health partner for Cleveland County since 2000, and we began to manage the care in 2013. The first one of those three groups that I mentioned, the standard plans, they launched last year. They've been operational now for a year and a month, so that's the other managed care that's already launched in North Carolina. So those two are already impacting and working with citizens here in the county. A couple of things that are different from what the future managed care will look like versus what managed care looks like today, both of them are operated under a waiver, so you know, that's just the citation there about what the federal regulation is that's impacted here. The goal of this work is to put behavioral health care and physical health care together. So right now, if we're responsible for a member, we're working with them, we're only working with them on their behavioral health care. So what happens is a member, a citizen in the county, has to go here to have their physical health care managed, they go here for pharmacy and a third place for behavioral health care. Under this concept, what will happen is they'll have one place to go, and that'll be to partners, to help them with all parts of their health care. The North Carolina General Assembly is the one that passes the laws that govern what we do, and so that's what, that's what we're responding to, and they have to, the state of North Carolina has to get those waivers approved by the Centers for Medicaid and Medicare Service by the federal government. So there's just a really quick chart to show you what's the difference in a tailored plan and what's versus a Medicaid direct plan. You'll see that on the left-hand side of that table, the most vulnerable citizens in the county fall under the tailored plan. Those are the members that we currently manage and will continue to manage in the tailored plan. Again, the second point there, we'll be responsible for all of their health care, including their pharmacy care. The third bullet there, the innovations in registry services and tailor care management, those are primarily the individuals with an intellectual and developmental disability, a severe intellectual and developmental disability. What will be different is there'll be a lot more focus in the future, since we're able to manage their complete health care on wellness programs, and making sure that last bullet there, that we can get members that don't have access to transportation, and transportation can be a barrier for a lot of people to get health care, that we'll be focused on making sure that they can get to all their appointments. The right-hand column is the more limited Medicaid direct plan, and you can see there, it doesn't include physical health and it doesn't include pharmacy care. So who will we serve under the tailor plans? Again, the Medicaid and Health Choice members who need that, who start with a primary behavioral health need or intellectual developmental disability, and also those that don't have Medicaid, whose funding is through state block grant money, will be part of our tailored plan population. So what's a little bit different or some of the managed care benefits? Tailored plan members will get an access to a whole array of doctors and specialists. Partners will be contracting, you'll see the second bullet there, with Carolina Complete Care, they're one of the standard plan operators now. They are a large healthcare plan in North Carolina. They already have a network with primary care physicians and specialty physicians and ancillary healthcare providers, all the hospitals and others, so we've partnered with them to make sure that we have a robust network of providers for the citizens here in the county. Third bullet point there, again, physical health, pharmacy, intellectual developmental disability, and behavioral health services. I've already mentioned non-emergency medical transportation that we'll be arranging and helping members get to where they need to be. The last two things are very important, it's a very different part of the plan going forward. Everything that we're doing is moving the system towards a value-oriented service system, so that when healthcare providers deliver a service, they're not just focused on delivering service and getting paid for it, another service and getting paid for it. It really is trying to pay them appropriately for getting outcomes, so that good care gets reimbursed, so that success for the members, keeping members out of a higher cost of care is worth more money. So we want to partner with the providers to make sure it's not just the volume of care, it's the quality of care that we're looking to reimburse for. And I think the last bullet there is the key to healthcare period, and that is prevention. Looking to see how we can intervene early, and our members are no different from all of us in this room, the more that we can do to do preventative care and detect things early, have the wellness visits and everything, the better life we live, and also the less costly healthcare consumer that we are. So again, the major differences in the plan versus now, we will be adding physical health care and pharmacy. Tailored care management is a significant piece of this reform, and that means that every member has an assigned one care manager, they have one person that's responsible for their care. So again, if they have a pharmacy need, if they have a physical health care need, they get cancer, they're going to have a baby, they have a heart attack, they have an intellectual developmental disability, they have one person that's working with them. Now, that person has a team of people around them, but they have one person that's their known person, help them navigate the system. Care management for some of the state complex members, again, those most complex, those most vulnerable citizens in the county, will be providing care management with them. There'll be different lines. The Medicaid recipients now, you know, they don't have a health insurance card like you and I have in our pocket, that kind of tells us where to call. Under this new system, they'll be, they'll have a member line, there'll be a provider line, a nurse, a nurse call line for them to have access to healthcare services like we do. Some of the things there, and I'm not going to cover all these just in the interest of time, but again, a lot of focus on healthy living, a lot of focus on preventative care, and I mentioned there on the last bullet, that the insurance card is going to be an important kind of difference for them. I do want to make mention of the second one, because I'll make a comment, the second bullet there, because I want to make a comment later about not just Medicaid transportation, but our collaboration with the county, and that's around social determinants of health. You know, one of the things that we've learned from the West Shelby Project, and one of the things that partners has learned, is that there are so many drivers to an individual's health care that aren't things that you think of in terms of healthcare. It's access to food, it's access to job training opportunities, it's access to stable living and housing, it's access to resources, you know, throughout the county for, again, a whole host of things that we take for granted, and a lot of our members don't have access to. The more that we can provide that, the less costly they're going to be to the state system, and frankly, the more opportunity there are going to be to fill the workforce in the county, and to have, again, just an overall quality of life that we all want for ourselves as well. So this just gives you a little bit of the timeframe. Again, we've been working on this for a while. The standard plans launched a year ago in July, and you'll see there that we've gone through the process now of application and enrollment of members is upon us now, and we'll start this process December the first of this year. So we're just a few months away from going live with the tailored plan as well as the Medicaid direct plan. Just real quickly, this shows you on the left, this is their benefit card, this is, you know, I've got med cost insurance through my work, and I've got a card that looks very similar to this. It gives me access to here's who I need to call. It tells the provider what my benefits are when I show up to my primary care doctor. Same thing will be available to all the Medicaid recipients, gives them access on the back, the bottom example is the, is the back of the card, 24-hour nurse care line, 24-hour crisis lines, and things, again, that we all have access to now. The right-hand column is just, gives you a picture, again, when we were here before, we were in the process of taking on five additional counties. We started originally as eight, we added Rutherford County to make us nine, and then we added the five counties last year to give us the current 14. So that's all on Medicaid transportation, just quickly on two other topics. The opioid epidemic, which I know this county has been extremely focused on, I applaud Brian and the work that he does, bringing partners to the table, bringing really the Wright County leadership to the table. You know, one of the things, one of the comments I always make, we deal with 14 counties, one of the comments I always make is, is what's rewarding for us to deal with Cleveland County is it's always a community solution, right? So when we, when we have the opportunities and, you know, we come together as health department director, it's DSS, it's school systems, it's law enforcement, it's the clergy, it's the United Way agencies that come together, and that's no different than the opioid crisis, that's who it's going to take to have to respond successfully. So, you know, as Brian mentioned earlier, the state has now started to process some of those early payments, the first payments have gone out for the opioid settlement money. So it's important for us to leverage that money and look to see how we can, it's not enough to solve the problem, but how can we leverage that? And one of the things that's fortunate for us is, again, we deal with 14 counties, so we can bring ideas that people have tried, we can do regional approaches to try to not just reinvent the wheel 100 times over in the state. So that's one of the things that is successful for us. The other thing is that we've got a very good relationship right now with the Attorney General's Office, specifically some of the attorneys that wrote the settlement and helped negotiate the settlement, and they are very willing, I know that the Attorney General was here in town a couple of weeks ago or last week, but I think that that's going to be critical for us to make sure that we leverage that relationship and get any additional help that we can get from the state. And I've mentioned the last two bullet points there about the collaboration from the other 14, and applauding the county manager. Last thing again is I look at the 21, 22, you know, target areas by the county, and I see that the fifth target area that you had was about improving the wellness of the citizens in the county, and it really is, that lines up perfectly to partners. And everything that we're trying to do for the members that we serve, almost, you know, just check off the list going down, your goal number five, it aligns perfectly with what we're doing. So one of the things that we want to make sure that we do is continue to collaborate and work with the county. We think it helps the partners' members, but it also fits with your overall goal to impact the healthcare rankings in the county, and how, you know, working together, we can drive that to a better place that we're all looking to drive to. The last bullet point there is just with partners' expanding role for members. We are focused on accessibility of care, we're focused on the total overall care and the prevention and social influences of well-being, so that, again, aligns perfectly with the county. Our mission statement is improving lives and strengthening communities, and I would argue that that could be the county's, you know, improving lives and strengthening communities. So there's great alignment there, and again, I just wanted to tell you thank you for the partnership that we have with the commissioners and the county manager and leadership team.
Thank you, sir, and y'all would echo the same thing. Thank you for the partnership that we share. At this time, I'll see if any of the commissioners have any comments or questions for you. Board?
I've sat on this board for a while, and it has took me a while to get my head above and understand it, and I'm still not sure I'm quite there, but I appreciate your friendship and answering questions. Every time I've always had questions, you've always been there to help. You've always been here when we needed something in Cleveland County, so.
Thank you.
We appreciate, we appreciate your support.
Thank you. Thanks for serving on our board. We appreciate that.
Anyone else?
All right, Rhett, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time. Next item on the agenda tonight is Article 46 Sales Tax Referendum, update from Kerry Milton.
I'll also try to be brief. I actually was kind of excited that there were a lot of folks here tonight, because I thought this may be a good opportunity for me to share a little bit about Article 46, and really the impact that it's going to have, or could have, excuse me, on our community. So I just wanted to talk a few minutes. My objective is basically to say why a referendum. I know the board is very well aware of the whys, but I'd like the public to understand that a little bit more, why it's important, the advantages, and then lastly, ways we have begun to educate the public about the referendum, how it'll be used, and again, the importance of it. As you're all very well aware, one of your strategic goals was really to continue to partner with Cleveland County schools with a goal of increasing teacher supplements and developing a long-term, long-term school capital improvement plan. This board has continued to be forward-thinking. You really recognize that school capital is a huge part of the county budget and want to continue that momentum around planning for the future and planning ahead. As we all know, the average age of the schools in Cleveland County is approximately 50 years, and schools are really expensive to build. The boards, both the school board and the commissioners came together for a joint meeting in August, and really, what we saw was kind of phase one of the long-term capital improvement plan. That phase one really included a facility assessment, and really what came out of that meeting was the need for identification of nearly $150 million in construction projects that really need to occur long-term within Cleveland County schools. Really, the next step in this capital improvement plan will be for the school board and the commissioners to work together to really develop an execution strategy which looks at timing and funding for these projects that need to be completed. I found this quote, and it really resonated with me, "Education is the passport to the future, for tomorrow belongs to those who prepare for it today." Again, just really wanted to commend the board for really preparing, for looking ahead, and really, Article 46 is one of those opportunities, I think, that we have to prepare for the future and look for a way to help fund some of those projects that were identified. Article 46, as you all are aware, would be an increase in the sales tax in Cleveland County from 6.75% to 7%, although minimally invasive to taxpayers or to our residents, excuse me, it really will generate $3 million in revenue, which would, as the board approved in their resolution in June, which would be used for school capital. One thing I want to make a note of, really, four out of five of those adjoining counties have already passed Article 46, so Rutherford County, Catawba County, Lincoln County, Gaston County, if you look at this map here, really, all of those counties that are surrounding us have already passed this referendum. So when our residents go to shop in any of those counties, they're helping to make their community better instead of helping to make our community better. Really, almost half of the counties in North Carolina have passed Article 46, and again, it's just a way to help improve the community. So I just wanted to kind of take a quick minute to talk about that economic impact, that $3 million. $3 million, although I'm not talking about a property tax rate increase or anything like that, but I just wanted to really show you how it compares. So $3 million, as you're all aware, $1 million is one cent on the tax rate. So if you look to the right, the average property value in Cleveland County is approximately $125,000. A three-cent tax increase would have an annual impact of $37.49 on that property owner. Now, we all know, there's a lot of properties in Cleveland County that are valued a lot more than $125,000, so the impact to that property owner will be, would be far greater. Now, on the left, you look at the quarter cent sales tax. We did a little research, the average household spends approximately $10,000 a year on eligible goods, and we'll talk about eligible goods in a minute. The annual impact on that side would be $25. Now, the reason why that impact is lower is really, this is a consumer-based tax, there's a wider pool of people who actually contribute to the burden there on the sales tax side. So people who don't own property, people who are visitors, people who work in Cleveland County but shop while they're in Cleveland County, those, those folks would also be contributing on the quarter cent sales tax side. And if you see the difference between the $37.49 to the $25, it's about a 49% increase from the property tax side to the quarter cent sales tax. And again, if the property value was more than $125,000, that 49% would be far greater than it is.
Question right quick.
Mm-hmm.
You need to verify that the property tax on the right side is only used for reference to show in the event that it was done.
And that's what I said, nobody's talking about making increase in property taxes. This was just, just a model that I used to show the difference between a property tax increase and a quarter cent sales tax. No, you're absolutely right, that was for my own reference here, not anything that the board has mentioned at all. So talking about what goods are eligible, I think that one thing to make note of, this sales tax increase, should it be appreciated? this sales tax increase, should it be approved, does not apply to groceries or gas. Um, I put this little image on the bottom of what it would look like on the ballot. Uh, the reason why I did that is because if you look at, at this image here, it doesn't say what it will be used for, it really just says, do you vote for or against a quarter cents, a quarter percent, uh, in addition to other local sales and use taxes. Um, we really want to work hard over the next couple of months to educate the public on what this would be used for, because the average voter, if they were to go to the poll and only see that, would probably vote against. So we're working hard, um, we've already had some marketing efforts underway, we have a press release that's posted on our website, it's been sent to the newspaper, we've created a webpage, uh, off the clevelandcounty.com website that has a frequently asked questions. Uh, I, as well as a representative from the school, uh, system have appeared on, will be on Talk of the Town, uh, in School Matters. Some of the things that we'll be doing moving forward, uh, we are planning to have somebody speak at Cago, uh, our goal is to go to all PTO organizations in the county, we, uh, the principals will be sharing this message to their students, uh, we're getting ready to launch a social media campaign. And lastly, what we feel like is one of the most important things that we need to do is really have a presence, um, at the early voting site, as well as Election Day volunteers out there to, again, educate the public on the, the positive impact that this sales tax, should it be passed, um, would have, uh, on the future of Cleveland County and the schools. Just wanted to show you an example of some of the marketing that we're doing. On the left is our frequently asked questions page, and on the right, you'll see where our press release. And then these are just a couple of, um, some of the marketing tools we're going to be using, and this is just another one, that talks about when you go shop in other counties, uh, you're helping contribute, uh, to those communities rather than our own. That's all I have.
Thank you, Kerry.
Any questions for me?
Yeah, Board, do you have any questions or comments for Kerry?
I have a comment, I'm, I'm very disappointed in the school system, because they've been having their school board meetings, you hear nothing about this Article 46, and the whole Article 46 is going to construction and repair of the school itself, so they should have been out front before us and really advertising for it, but I hadn't saw anything come out of the school system, and I may be wrong, so if I am somebody, you know, correct me, but, you know, we, we're pushing this thing for them, but they're not willing to help herself, I don't think.
And we're, and we're talking about eight weeks?
Mm-hmm. We have, so had several meetings...
Not a strong message to send in eight weeks.
Yeah. We've had several meetings with, with some of the members of their team, but have not made, uh, much progress at this point.
Anything else? All right, thank you, Kerry. Next item on the agenda is Board Appointments tonight, we have one, Social Services Advisory Board.
Yes, yes, Board, you have the list of applicants in front of you. At this time, you will need to appoint one person for, for your term set to expire June 30th, 2026. Know that all applicants on the list have been vetted and verified through, uh, our DSS Director Katie Swanson, some of her leadership staff, and the Social Services Advisory Board.
Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
I would like to make a motion to appoint Gisele Buck.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion second from Ms. Buck. All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed will say no. Motion carried unanimously.
Yes, sir.
Commissioners, do you have anything you'd like to report? See you none. Staff, do you have anything you'd like to say? All right, at this time, we will, uh, motion second to adjourn, but before we do that, our next meeting of the Cleveland County Board of Commissioners will be held on Tuesday, September 20th at 6:00 PM here in the Commissioner's Chambers. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed?